This meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meeting Law and has been duly advertised in the newspaper as an official meeting. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltah?
Present.
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 Present. I need a motion for approval of the agenda with addendums.
Motion, second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltah?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I'd like to go to the podium as I need to recognize.
Good evening. Good evening. On behalf of the Jackson Board of Education, I'm very pleased to be able to address the public tonight in celebration of the award of the National Blue Ribbon for Lucy Holman Elementary School. The National Blue Ribbon School Program recognizes public and private elementary, middle, and high schools based on their overall academic excellence and their progress in closing achievement gaps among student subgroups. Every year, the U.S. Department of Education seeks out exemplary schools across the country and invites them to apply for this honor. The National Blue Ribbon School Award affirms the hard work of the students, educators, families, and communities in creating safe and welcoming schools where students master challenging, engaging content. Their leaders not only articulate a vision of excellence and hold everyone to high standards, they stay close to the real action of teaching and learning, mutual respect, and trust run deep in their cultures. Data from many sources drive adaptations to support every student, family, and educator's work together in trust. National Blue Ribbon Schools are honored at an annual award ceremony in Washington, D.C., where each receives a plaque and flag to signify its exemplary status. These schools serve as examples for other schools throughout the nation, and details of their achievement are shared on the U.S. Department of Education website. Holman was one of nine schools honored with this award in New Jersey this year. Let's take a few moments this evening and celebrate this excellence through viewing of this video produced by our JTV students, JTV teachers, and Ms. Irwin, Coordinator of Communications and Technology.
I remember it was a Tuesday, September 21st, 11:02 a.m., specifically because I had to continue to check on the website. And I was in an administrative meeting, and I remember that Mrs. Promelli, our superintendent, was speaking, and I quickly went on the website on my laptop and I checked, and I had this great big smile. And all I kept thinking about was I could not wait to get back to Holman to just tell my staff.
He made an announcement over the P.A. system later on that day. And you could hear through the hallways, "Woohoo! Yay!" It was a collective effort from administration to teachers to parents, to students, to support staff members. It is collective effort.
What sets Holman apart is truly our ability to reach all the subgroups. Our students who are English as a second language students and all of our different subgroups that we have here. It's an extremely diverse community in a diverse school. So I'm very proud that we are able to reach all those different students, both academically and socially, emotionally.
I think what I'm most proud of is closing that achievement gap. What's unique about our staff, really, is that they know their students by name, but they also know their students by need. And not only the academic need, but their social-emotional need as well. So they know the need, but they also know what to do about the need. They recognize what a student needs, whether it be just a little extra support in the classroom or whether they need to reach out for some extra intervention support. And they're always available to make sure those needs are met for each student. So I think we worked very hard in using our data to close that achievement gap, to making sure our students could do the best that they possibly could. And I think our results showed that.
There's many things that I'm proud of in this building. Some of them happen to be the formative assessment that we use, that the teachers drill down to every individual student and meet them where they're at. They can tell where the student is, and then they instruct accordingly to bring them to higher levels of achievement. So it's the academic piece that they really have a strong hold on, but it's also the heart, the heart of caring about every single individual student and family. And when you put those two things together, you have this powerful model of really engaging students in learning, creating excitement of learning, and in a climate and culture of students believing that they can learn.
You can truly tell that the Holman staff is here for the students. They love being here with the students. They love teaching students. They enjoy creating this nurturing environment. They also like having fun with the students as well. In addition to our teaching staff, there are numerous other staff members who just contribute to this sense of community within the Holman School. There's our front main office, secretarial staff, our security staff that's also in the front lobby, our receptionists who are greeting the community members that come each day into our school. There's also our lunch aids in the cafeteria, our custodians who help to keep this place clean, our cafeteria staff who just, you know, create numerous amounts of meals to feed our students. All the combined efforts help to make Holman a National Blue Ribbon School.
I think what makes Holman special is the support of staff. I think if we've learned anything over these last 18 months is that we need to rely on each other to get through trying times, and the staff has been phenomenal in supporting each other, not only academically, but socially and emotionally as well. I mean, they recognize what a student needs, whether it be just a little extra support in the classroom or whether they need to reach out for some extra intervention support. And they're always available to make sure those needs are met for each student. So I think we worked very hard in using our data to close that achievement gap.
Our team works really hard to make sure that our students get everything that they need. Our main goal there is eight of us total on our board, and we all really work well together to make sure that the students can have everything that they need. And our first priority is the students and the teachers, to make sure that they have a great education, but not only a good education, but that they can have also fun activities as well, especially now with the COVID and everything else. So we want to incorporate everything in there, and it's really a good feeling to hear that everything that we do and all the hard work that we put in does pay off in the long run. I think what makes Holman special is the teachers and the staff members all around. My kids love coming to school. They come home reading about things they've done in the classroom. They come home reading about their friends, different things that they've done daily, the relationships that they form not only with the staff members, but with their friends and as well as the administration. The principal knows the kids by name, which I think makes a great importance, walking through the hallways. They know him. He knows them, and they just love coming here.
I think Holman is special because of its people. From our parents, families, they support our school, help make money so we can buy programs to help our students. We also have staff members who care about their students, go above and beyond every day to make sure those students achieve, close those learning gaps. We have our support staff members who help our students, particularly during COVID. Our school nurse is so involved, doing so many things to make sure our students are healthy and can attend school every day, to our administration, and so on.
I think being a Blue Ribbon School is just something overall to be proud of. I've been here for eight years, and I couldn't be happier here, coming to an elementary school. Of course, from a first-hand parent's point of view, you're always a little weary, and I've always felt like my kids were safe here. I felt like they were happy here. So it's never been a doubt in my mind that they weren't learning, they weren't happy, they weren't safe. So I think it's just overall something to be proud of, saying that I am from Holman, that we are a Blue Ribbon School, and it just makes their whole education even that much better.
Here in the Jackson School District, one of the major things that we do is try to connect with students. It's really at the forefront of knowing your students, knowing where they are academically, but also getting to know them personally, getting to know their families, and creating relationships with students, trusting relationships, so that academically they trust the decisions that are made and they can move forward academically, feeling safe and secure and knowing that the adults in the building care deeply for them. Along with that, it's forming the relationships with families and parents. So really, our district, I think, does a phenomenal job. We have been doing this for years, and it really helps to form these strong connections and relationships with students so that they feel connected to their schools and to each other and the adults in the building. Just really wanted to express the sincere thank you. I mean, it's been a difficult time, you know, in the community, in our country, with living through a pandemic, and even through that, our educators and our staff here persevered in doing what's in the best interest of students. And I think this Blue Ribbon acknowledges that, and I want to thank Mr. Karis for his leadership, a tremendous administrator, and the staff who put every day their hard work into not only the instruction, but also the heart of this building. So it's a tremendous place, and Jackson is a tremendous place for students.
To be recognized as a Blue Ribbon School, it just validates and celebrates our school's excellence, and it lets us know that we have, I know that I have a wonderful staff and I have students that are just excited to learn. And I'm just thankful for the staff, the students, and the community for all their efforts for this prestigious distinction.
My honor to invite to the podium the Blue Ribbon Team to accept on behalf of all of Holman. Holman Elementary School Principal, Richard Karis, Holman Reading Specialist, Lisa Rainey, and Holman Guidance Counselor, Mary Ann Gudich. We would also like all the members of the Holman staff who are present to please stand. Mr. Karis and the Holman staff, please accept again this well-deserved plaque in recognition of this accomplishment.
Come on, Mike, get in there, man.
No, I got it. Thank you.
Good job. National Blue Ribbon School is one of the recognized symbols of exemplary teaching and learning. We could not be more proud of the Holman staff, students, and community. A job well done. Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Ms. Promelli for her superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. We obviously are very proud of Holman, and we have been celebrating them all week, and we will continue to celebrate you. On Sunday evening, a few of us, including PTO and some students, wet and decorated the outside of Holman with blue ribbons and did some sidewalk chalk messages in blue to the staff as well. Unfortunately, it rained, but Mr. Karis assures me that a lot of it still stayed, so hopefully you all enjoyed that. Yesterday, the staff via the JEA were able to have a coffee cake snack break yesterday, and today we have this celebration, but we still have some things in store for the rest of the week, and they're all surprises still. So we're looking forward to continuing that celebration again. Super proud of Holman School, the staff. Our district also helped to celebrate on Monday. Everybody in the district was invited to wear blue, so that was exciting, too. We have some cute pictures of that as well. So again, congratulations. Keeping with tradition at our board meetings, we have our high school board representatives available to give us an update on the things happening in our high schools. So I do see Brooklyn here from Liberty. Could you come to the podium and share some Liberty happenings for us, please?
Thank you, Superintendent Promilli, Board of Ed members, and guests. November has been yet another successful month for Liberty. It started off with several fall sports teams wrapping up their seasons, which were often commemorated with banquets and award ceremonies. It was a great way to celebrate the 2021 Fall Athletes while bringing many families together. together. This past weekend, the Interact Club participated in the road cleanup right by Liberty. The cleanup was a huge success. It empowered the students and offered them the opportunity to help beautify the community. The club is also currently working on their project for the upcoming holiday season. They're asking for students to donate items such as socks, water bottles, shampoo, et cetera, in order to make blessing bags to give to those in need. It is nice to see how much of an impact they are making in everyone's lives. Other clubs have been busy with other events as well. Just last week, Liberty held their National Honor Society induction ceremony. We want to offer a big congratulations to all of the newly inducted members. The Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society has also been busy and is pairing with the Junior ROTC by sponsoring a Toys for Tots drive, which will be ending on December 13th. Other clubs are hosting various fundraisers to help offset expenses. These include the National Honor Society and the classes. The most notable of these is the Class of 2025, Working with Babacooz in Jackson, to host an event. It is scheduled for tomorrow, 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. So hopefully you are able to offer them your support. Be sure to show the flyer before checking out, so that they will receive 20% of the proceeds from your order. You will enjoy a stress-free dinner while helping them profit. Another event that is sure to benefit everyone is the Drama Club's Fall Production. Opening night of I Hate Shakespeare is only one day away. The curtains open at 7:00 p.m. tomorrow and Friday. Saturday, there is a matinee at 1:00, and then the final performance will be 6:00 p.m. that night. Tickets are only $10 and can be purchased at the door. The Drama Club is wasting no time on rest and will be holding auditions for the musical The Little Mermaid later this week. They are very excited to start rehearsing for the next show. But you will not have to wait for the musical to be the next show. The TV studio is planning another one of their favorite traditions, Home for the Holidays. It will be held on December 2nd and is a way to get everyone ready for the holiday season. Our band is also thrilled to bring holiday cheer as they perform in ABC's Thanksgiving Day Parade. This year, their band will be joining forces with Memorial's to represent Jackson in Philadelphia. The sports teams and clubs have not been the only ones that have been busy. The teachers and staff are also hard at work with professional development all week, but they still found time to celebrate Holman's winning the prestigious Blue Ribbon Award. The school was a sea of blue as a tribute to honoring their impressive achievement. As you can see, there is a great deal to celebrate at Liberty. I appreciate you granting us this platform to share all that is happening with you and the community. Thank you again for your support. I'm looking forward to coming back next month to update you with even more great highlights from the school.
Very informative update, Brooklyn, of things happening at Liberty. There's lots of wonderful things happening and great heart, as you see, happening there as well, with lots of opportunities to give to others. So thank you for the update. Normally, Dakota is next from Memorial, but I'm not seeing him in the audience, just an all call, just in case he's hiding on me anywhere. Okay, so it looks like Memorial, we will see them next meeting in December for an update. So tonight, we have our annual State of the Schools presentation that we'll be sharing with the board and the public this evening. Traditionally, the State of the Schools has always been in place in regards to sharing, it's been a requirement for the district to share standardized test scores with the board and the public after they've been released, and we've had an opportunity to review them. As you know, it sort of has changed over time with the pandemic and not having standardized assessments, although we do have some assessments to share this evening. We have revised our State of the School. Our State of the School really gives more of a broad overview to our board and to the public of things that have been happening in the beginning of the school year, a sort of update, a broad update of things that have been happening. So tonight, Mr. Rotante and I will present a short presentation, just as an update to things that have been occurring in the district. Thank you, Ms. Aron. So we'll begin with the, obviously, the school opening and the road forward. For board members, the presentation is behind you if you'd like to view it. Obviously, we had the requirement of the school district to create the Road Forward Plan by the New Jersey Department of Education. That was created and approved by the board. And then we moved into our opening of the school year in September with great excitement, being able to open for full, full days of schooling for our students. We did have to pivot and change a little bit of our quarantine instruction, when unfortunately we have an increase in quarantines happening. So we did revise that plan to make it more accessible to learning for our students. Also, we have put in a lot of interventions and supports for students, knowing that we would need that as we entered into the school year after the interesting year we had last year with a lot of virtual learning. We were thrilled, and are still thrilled, and you heard some of the things that have been happening over at Liberty, but we've had full, fun fall activities. You've seen lots of highlights at our last board meeting. We shared a lot of the fall activities that have been happening. We have clubs up and running, athletics. We've had band happening, and band competitions, and homecoming events, and homecoming dances. We've had our National Honor Society inductions in person. And then we were fortunate this year to have an offering for our families to have either virtual or in-person back-to-school nights and conferences. So all of these things have been happening, and it's, it's, it's given us a little bit more sense of normalcy in the school year. Every year, the school district sets a focus and a direction, so that we are all moving with the same vision in the district. This year's focus is what you see on the screen. It's students' access to what they need through personalized learning, whether that be academic, socially, emotionally, or engaging our students in learning. And we view this by a tiered system of support. This tiered system of support has been in place for many years in the district. The first tier really being in the classroom, working with students within the classroom, personalizing their learning is the focus this year, and differentiating within the classroom, and strengthening our Tier One supports in the classroom to support all learners, and most importantly, meeting students where they're at and moving them forward in their learning. Tier Two is a little bit more intensive, small group intervention that occurs for targeted groups of students who are still struggling. And then Tier Three, strengthening our programs for intensive intervention for those students who identify themselves as that need. So this is really our vision for the year, all of us moving in the same direction for personalized approaches to learning and social-emotional learning and engaging students in school. We also have our professional development five areas that support that vision and theme, one being meeting the needs of individual students, both socially, emotionally, and academically. Again, those, what are those individual learning paths for students, each student, to help them meet their highest potentials? Engaging students in student-centered classrooms, connecting them to learning, engaging in their learning, and accelerating their learning through enrichment and remediation. Raise, keeping our standards high and remediating and enriching to get students to their highest potentials. And again, social-emotional learning, roles of adults. You saw in the video tonight for Holman and how important it is in this district to ensure our students feel comfortable and safe in our schools, so that they take risks in their learning. And that's all about Professional Development Area Four and Five. Again, that's social-emotional pieces, the connections, and feeling safe and comfortable in their schools. A sampling of some of the curriculum instruction initiatives that we have in place or are putting into place include, you saw the summer acceleration programs that were offered this past summer, again, return to full-day instruction, using benchmark data, so that we use formative assessment to know where our students are, and use that data to drive each student's individual learning. Some of the programs and approaches we use and have implemented as a foundation, phonics program in our earliest years of learning how to read. Problem-based learning is a part of connecting students to their learning and connected to real life. Why are we learning this? Creating problems so that the students can solve those problems and learn while doing so. Additional support, we've added an additional support program for our students who struggle at the middle school level for math. And we were fortunate enough to put back a reading specialist, so that we have a reading specialist at both of our middle schools this year. That was something that had been lost in current years in the budget. Exciting for us, we do participate in a Seal of Bileiteracy for the last few years. This is an incredible opportunity for high school students to receive a certification and a transcript notation on their transcript that they are proficient in two languages. And to do that, you have to show proficiency through assessments. And this year, with Ms. La Citra's direction, we are fortunate to be able to offer a stamp test, which will allow students to reach that goal of getting the Seal of Bileiteracy. And we have several, several students who will qualify for that. I believe it was over 60-something students this year, right, Ms. La Citra? So it's, it's a great opportunity for students. And most recently, you probably have saw the communication that went out last night to our middle school and high school families about the opportunity for after-school support with homework or tutoring, availability that will start after Thanksgiving for students who would like that extra support in math, literacy, social studies, or science areas. So that's just a sampling of some of the things that we have put into place thus far. There's lots of more things that we will be also implementing over the year. Along with the emotional wellness, the social-emotional pieces, we are continuing to do our daily meetings, our morning meetings, our advisory meetings in all of our schools that help students to connect to each other, get settled for the day, plan for the day, and work on some of those executive skills. Obviously, we focus on the connection with students, students to students. We have implemented and brought back our, you know, assemblies, activities. We have a program at the high school where teachers work and create mentoring of students. We're working on connection coaches, helping students connect to school academically and through extracurriculars. We've added an additional counselor at the elementary level this year, and we've expanded the opportunity of counseling in all of our schools, along with a partnership we have with the YMCA for licensed counselors to work with students additionally beyond what students are receiving during the day. And that's available in all of our schools. And as I mentioned before, we're bringing back as many activities as possible. We know how important that is for our students to connect to schools and clubs as well. You'll hear a little bit more about the parent survey that went out from Mr. Rotante, who will share some of that information soon, too. I also wanted to point out, an area that I know we have communicated a lot about recently is transportation. We know that we have a national bus driver shortage, but additionally, our district has struggled the last few years in regards to just keeping on top of our transportation and our needs and strengthening the department and updating the department. So we are fortunate now to have a director in place, and our transportation team, who is in place right now, is really working well together to move things forward. These are some of the areas that the department has been working on and will continue to work and work on throughout the year. They're reviewing the routes for efficiency. Will continue to do that, moving forward into next year as well. Replacing old cameras on buses, a lot of them have been very outdated. This will put all of our cameras on the same field of technology on all of our buses. Obviously, we're trying to recruit more drivers, so please, if you know of anybody interested, please ask them to come, come reach out to us. One of the best things to have is community members who are able to drive our students. We have wonderful bus drivers who are so crucial to that connection with students as well. And then we have some technology initiatives and really trying to bring the department up to advanced technologies that are available to us. So we're going to be updating a lot of technology. One of the things that are on order right now and will be installed in the spring are installing some tablets, similar to like the GPS availability that you have, like on your phone for GPS. It will allow us to send routes to drivers virtually. It'll allow for GPS and bus tracking. And there is an app for families as well, that when we get it up and running, you will be able to know where your child is on that bus, which will definitely help our communication. As you know, we've been struggling a little bit with the communication piece, so we're looking to strengthen that. We're also obviously always looking to improve on our safety protocols for students and for our drivers. So this is just a little sampling of the things that we are putting into place this year. We'll continue to keep the board updated on our initiatives and the happenings in the district throughout the year. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rotante now to talk a little bit about our assessments and some other things happening in the district.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Permili. Yes, so we'll begin with our required state assessments. These are assessments from the Department of Education that we are required to give each year. The Start Strong is the first of these that was given to all of our students in grades three through 10 back in October. I'll go over the information from that in a few slides. Our NJSLA is our assessment that normally, this is the presentation where we would be sharing results from the past year with you. However, that test has not been given in the last two years, so there's no data to report from that, other than to let you know that we'll be giving that test to our students in grades three through eight in the spring. And in the high school level, our fall block students will take it in December, and our spring block students will take it in grade nine in May. So that's, that's just going to be for grade nine for our high school students. Another new assessment this year, it's the New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. This is a test that did exist in a different form several years ago. It has not been a required assessment. It will be given now to all of our juniors, and it will become part of their graduation requirements of passing that assessment. We're still awaiting further details from the State Department of Education on that assessment, but we'll obviously have our students prepared and ready for it in the week of March 14th, when it is ready to go. Those are the state-required assessments. These are our district assessments that we use, that quite honestly is really the bread and butter of what we do as a district. As Mrs. Permili mentioned earlier, our tiered instruction, where we are able to reach students at their needs, as you saw in the video for Holman earlier before, and how we are able to look at every individual student and determine what their needs are. These are the assessments and tests and kind of tools that we use to make that happen. The literacy ones, math information that we gain from here allows us to identify students that need to be enriched, need to be given higher-level skills, our students who are struggling and maybe need some different lower-level skills. And really, every teacher has the ability to understand where their kids are and how to meet them at their level and bring them up to success over the course of the school year. So this is just a sampling of the major ones that we use throughout the district. You can see Foundations and Dibbles and Fontis and Pennell focus on literacy. IXL, we're using for math right now. And of course, as a former math and still math teacher at heart, the Fast Fact Fluency to make sure all of our kids become fluent and understand their math basic facts, one of the most important things that we can do for our students. So I mentioned the Start Strong assessment. So we did administer it in the beginning of October, and we have received the information from the state back in a digital format. We have not received parent reports yet. We were informed we would receive them in December, and as soon as we do, we will share them obviously with the parents, so they can see how their kids did on these tests. But they basically scored every child in three, three levels. They either scored the child as someone that needed strong support, someone who needed some support, or really less support, meaning that they were really on grade level. These tests were given for the previous year's standards, to kind of identify where the kids were, how much maybe learning loss may have happened, what skills may need to be reinforced over the course of the school year. So the first, it was given in the areas of literacy, math, and science. So this slide here shows our literacy results. And you can see really across the board, from grade five through grade 10, the majority of our students did score in the less support needed. I think that's a tremendous tribute to how hard our students worked, how hard our teachers worked over the past year. And despite the craziness of our schedules and what last school year was, our students still were able to keep up on grade level in a lot of areas. In grade four, this is the first time our fourth-grade students have taken this type of test. We normally would prepare our students a little bit more for the type of test, the format of the test. With the nature of what this test was, we did not spend the typical time that we would doing that. And I do attribute a little bit of the fourth-grade strong support needed, meaning leaning more towards strong support needed and how to take the test and how to use the computer versus strong support needed in their literacy skills. But based on that data, we are identifying our students already and making sure that we're meeting them where they need to be met for their educational needs. The next slide shows our math and kind of a little bit of the opposite of the literacy and really what all of our research and our findings kind of mirrored. We did find that our students did need a little bit more support in math. The brokenness of what last school year was was more of a challenge in the area of math versus literacy, without having, you know, direct instruction every day, having more remote learning, having students on remote learning, not having students in front of us full day, every day for math is where, you know, we definitely felt that we would take a little bit of a hit in where our math levels were, and these results do kind of back it up a little bit, where most of our students, the majority, were in the strong support needed versus. versus whereas the literacy was in the less support needed. So again, our teachers have this data. We've been, we've been using it already to identify our students and make sure our curriculum is aligned, make sure that we are focusing on not only the current-year skills, but making sure students have mastered skills needed to be successful this school year as we move forward. And the last slide was for science. This was only given to students in grades six, nine, and 12. You can see the data that shows there. The majority of our 12th graders are current, have fulfilled their science requirements and are not currently taking science courses. And there are also seniors that I don't think put the time and effort they probably needed to on this test. A little senioritis kicking in in October for some of our seniors. But for our sixth and our ninth graders, this gives us valuable data that our science teachers will use moving forward. Another assessment that is given to our high school students is our AP testing, our AP courses. These are for students who voluntarily sign up for our AP, our AP courses. It stands for Advanced Placement. These are college-level courses. We offer over 20 courses at each high school in all areas of math, science, literacy, fine arts, business, all other areas as well. What these tests are is really college-aligned. And I give tremendous kudos to our high school staff that teaches this class, these classes. The time and effort and energy they put into these is amazing. Our students really do benefit from taking college-level courses that regardless of how they do in the course, it really prepares them for the level of rigor that they would need to be successful once they leave our Jackson High Schools and move on to college-level courses. At the end of all of these courses in May, every student in the country that takes these courses takes the same exact college-level AP exam. Those exams are scored on a level from one through five, five being the highest score, one being the lowest. Typically, most colleges will accept credits. If a student receives a five or a four, and in many cases, a three on those tests, many colleges will exempt the child from taking that course in college. And this can be a huge money saver for parents and for students, as well as a huge, as I mentioned, level of, you know, ability to show that the students are prepared for college and ready to be successful. The three years that you see up here represent three very, very different school years. In the spring of 2020, our students were cruising along in a normal school year and ready for their AP exam. And March 13th of that year, which a date that will live in infamy for all of us, our school district shut down, and we closed the school year in that full remote setting. And all of those AP tests were taken remotely from home by our students in spring of 2020. Last school year, we had a very large array of how students were taking AP courses. We had some students here. We had some students on full remote. We were using an Apex online program for some of our AP courses. And for the first time, we gave our students the option of taking the AP exam. We did not require all of our students who took an AP class to take it. It was really an option. And you can see the significant dip in the amount of tests taken by students that just chose simply not to, not to take the AP tests in spring of last year. So we're going to move on and be very excited to spring of 2022. You can see our enrollment numbers for AP exams have gone up significantly even from 2020 in both high schools. And we're very excited that our students are back in class full-time. And I anticipate great things happening from our AP courses moving forward for the rest of the year. This information is on our state school performance report. It shows our graduation rates and our post-high school enrollment for our students. So you can see on the top graph up there, that shows our last-three-year cohorts of our four-year students, our students who are taking traditional four-year high school programs and their graduation rate. And on the right-hand side, that includes all of our students who may be in a special-needs program and remain in high school after their senior year for some additional courses and additional programs after high school. So you can see that the, on the right-hand side, really is more of a true representation of what our high school graduation rates are, because that includes all of our students that are in our programs. And you can see where our percentages of graduation rates fall. They are compared to the state graduation rates. The bottom graph on here, this is taken also by the State Department of Education. This represents our students who enroll in post-high school education. So on the district level, seventy-six point nine, just under seventy-seven percent of our students do enroll in post-high school courses. And you can see the breakdown there of about two-thirds are in a four-year program versus one-third in a two-year program. More students typically enroll in a public institution versus a private. And again, two-thirds to one-third students enrolling in-state versus out-of-state educational programs after high school. That number on that last slide did show that about seventy, about seventy-seven percent of our students do go on to post, post-secondary, post-high school enrollment. And what the next slide will show is, I'm sorry, I'm skipping back and forth on you. Our next slide does show that, you know, we recognize as a district, even more so now, I think, than in prior years, is, you know, going to high school, getting your high school diploma, going to college, it's, it's no longer a one-size-fits-all program that we need to prepare our students for after graduation. There are tremendous programs that our students are taking advantage of in the vocational world, in VOTEC, and even in the military forces that, you know, we applaud them for. And we need those, those students in those positions and to prepare them for them now more than ever. What we're doing to prepare those students, obviously, are our college-level students. You know, where our number-one thing is, we're making sure all of our students are graduating. They have met their course requirements. Our guidance counselors do an excellent job to make sure that our students are taking the required coursework that they have. They take electives that they're interested in. We have a tremendous program of studies at our high school. So the students really do have a lot of opportunities to take courses that they're excited about and interested in and hopefully generate an interest in something post-high school. The important thing is with the assessment piece for our high school students, we need to make sure that the state requirements for assessments, which has changed each year due to the different learning situations that we've been in over the last several years, that if students have not passed their assessment piece, we offer a portfolio assessment to every one of our seniors and work with them individually to make sure every single senior has the ability to complete the assessments needed so that they can graduate from one of our high schools. We're also currently working with Ocean County College to provide dual-credit courses. We have several of them running right now. We're looking to expand that, which provides our students in high school the opportunity to take college-level courses while in high school and earn credits that will help them towards their associate's degree if they, if they're looking to pursue an associate's degree after high school. We also have a tremendous vocational program, tremendous high school programs, including our foods, our woodshop, computer science, robotics, things like that that can also really help students if they want to get into some sort of trade or vocational program after high school. So moving forward with this data, one of the things that we have received from the state through the, our COVID pandemic is our ESER money. This is the money that's designated to specific programs that, that will impact students that have been affected from the past year and a half of schooling. This money is specifically being targeted for enrichment activities, activities that go beyond the school day and activities that support the mental health of our students. We did put out a survey. We had over six hundred and forty, six hundred and forty-four responses from our parents. And I have a quick, just quick summary of the data that came back from our parents on these next few slides. So I think what was overwhelmingly came through in the, in the survey is there is a strong interest for after-school programs, whether it's really specifically more so in-person, whether it's tutoring, whether it's homework help, whether it's enrichment, whatever the case may be, it's, it's a strong desire to have students remain after school and work on additional activities. The virtual activities and the virtual things, and even some of the summer academic programs was very mixed as far as priority. So we recognize that there's still a need for all of these programs to continue. And we'll be working with our staff and our administration, you know, to get, to bring some of these programs and enhance and, and add new programs as the school year progresses on. The other questions that were in that survey was, what areas do you feel your child needs the most support? Not a tremendous surprise, you know, writing, mathematics, reading were the top areas that parents felt their children needed the most support in. On the next slide, we asked what type of things would help students be connected to schools. As Mrs. Permili mentioned in, in the opening slides, you know, one of the most important thing that we can do is connect to our students and have them be connected to their schools and excited about coming to our schools. These are different types of things that we're going to be bringing onboard to help kids, not only just in the areas of academics, but also feel connected to their schools. And interest-based clubs, things like fishing club, cooking club, you know, those types of activities really generate an interest in our students. We have many of these kinds of things happening in certain areas of the school district. And the, the response and interest in the, in the schools is overwhelming and wonderful to see. Obviously, our mental health and wellness is very important to all of our students and staff at this point. And having wellness programs such as Healthy Life Choices, mindfulness, was the, the area that parents also did identify with more than half of the respondents, that that was an important program to offer for our students. And then we did ask as well if there was any interest in parent workshops. And again, the, one of the number-one responses was having mental health wellness support for parents, ideas and techniques that we can all use to work together to help our students be successful, not only in school, but out of school as well. To close, there's also some wonderful things that have been happening that Mrs. Permili will share you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Rotante. So in closing, again, just to highlight some wonderful things that are happening in our district. It really is a special place of educators here in our community is wonderfully supporting our, our schools. As mentioned in previous meetings and in announcements, the district has been fortunate enough to receive a preschool grant that will continue on now forever to provide free preschool to our community. And each year, we'll be expanding the capacity of that over the next five years so that we serve our universal preschool students in the community. Tonight's acknowledgement of the Holman Blue Ribbon Award. There's a picture of, of a student who is drawing the, the blue ribbon Sunday night so that the teachers could see it on the, on the walkway into the school. We also had a wonderful accomplishment by the Switlick School and the staff and the administration there and the students and the, and the parents. A green ribbon, national recognition for sustainable programs and educational programs there. And then finally, as a last slide of just celebration of some of the good things happening, there's much more. Obviously, we did receive stabilization aid that will help us significantly with the $4.2 million budget cut that's coming up again due to the S2. So we were pleased to receive that and hopeful that we'll be able to expand program instead of cut program. And we were fortunate this year, the Jackson Liberty Band has earned the state championship. Not only did they earn the state championship, but they went undefeated the entire marching band season. It was fantastic. And I had an opportunity to watch them several times. It was an amazing, amazing performance this year. So congratulations to them. And just again, one of the celebrations that we've had this, this year so far is the Jackson Memorial High School Business Department really has been doing a fantastic job with students. We had a first-place statewide essay winner, a first and second-place stock market competition winner, and a second-place overall international digital skills competition winning as well. So lots of good things happening. And so I close to the board tonight with, this is an overview of some wonderful things happening, some of our data, how we're going to use that data to move things forward for the benefit of our students. And I just open it to the board for any questions before I move on with my report.
Mr. Rotante, the graduation assessment for juniors, you don't know if that's a requirement or is it a requirement for graduation or? Yeah, so we don't even know what the scale is or anything like that? Okay.
Did I work? It magically appeared in the broadcast and beginning of the school year in our assessment broadcast from the state with no notification. There you go.
Just a reminder that at the lower levels, crowding the classroom is a foolish act. That having overcrowded at lower levels will cost us throughout the entire generations of students till, till senior year. So I want you to keep in mind, to save money, don't think twice or once about stuffing more students in a classroom. Also, I would like to ask a question. Do we share with, between Liberty and Memorial AP teachers, you know, the?
We currently do not, no. We offer, every course is offered at both high schools.
Okay, I would suggest that every now and then, when you have an extraordinary teacher at Liberty, that the, the Memorial students get to see him too, or her. And vice versa, when Memorial has an extraordinary AP instructor, that you find a way for Liberty to experience them, to come over or to, for the instructor to move, to, to be shared. Okay, also, I, I went to the teachers' convention. It was likely attended, but in my teaching, talking to teachers, which I'm one of them, they were, their one complaint was that their plate is too full, too full. That is, they have so many things to do that there are certain things they want to do they can't do. And I would suggest that if you have the power and the wisdom to look, sit down every now and then and say, what of these expectations of teachers is just plain crap? It's just plain time-consuming. Because what happens is, if you give a teacher time, if that teacher's a good teacher, they'll use it appropriately, but they can't use time they don't have. Because they use time, they steal from moments that they might have, taking a breath, and that's about it. So I would suggest that you, you find a way to take away some of the time wasted by teachers doing things that are not necessary, like unnecessary meetings that could be just by, by memos. The, the thing is that I would like for you to understand that the school district is successful and more blue ribbons will happen as you've accomplished if we use our time better and our professionals better. That's all I want to say, just don't.
Good points, thank you.
That's it.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Mr. Spolto?
I don't have a question, but I just want to point out before we get to the end of the meeting, when I would probably have said it while Mr. Karas is still here. Two quotes that stuck out in the presentation from Holman that I think are extremely important. And I only have one meeting left on the board here, but I hope that the board and the incoming board members remember these two things that were said by Holman, which was, teachers not only know their students by name, but they also know them by need. That's why they're a blue ribbon school. Because they got to figure out what each individual child needs, and that's what makes them great. The other thing that you heard from their, the, yes, you can clap. The other thing that you heard from the parent in the video was, my kids always feel safe and always feel happy here. That, when they walk in the door, allows them to succeed. So congratulations to Holman. Those were two things I wrote down as I was watching it, because they struck out at me. And that first quote, you know, as a school administrator myself, that's coming back with me. I'm stealing that one, so thank you.
Okay, were there any other questions about the presentation tonight? Mr. Acevedo, is your mic on? Do you have a question? No? Okay, I'm going to move on. So in closing, my superintendent's report, I just wanted to mention, we did, do have, we're currently having elementary, middle school teacher-parent conferences this week, hence the shortened days. And just a reminder, next week, we have a shortened day on Wednesday, and then the district is closed on Thursday and Friday, November 25th and 26th for Thanksgiving. And I do want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Permili. The standard committee reports, state and county school boards. The next county meeting is December 14th, 6:30 at the Clarion Hotel in Toms River. Parent group liaison, Mr. Brenetsky.
Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the last meeting. We do have one coming up on December 1st. Mrs. Permili, you want to speak to the president's council meeting at all?
Yes, we did go over it a little bit last, last meeting as well. We spoke a lot about the opening of the school year. We spoke about the fundraisers and the wonderful job that the PTO does with the fundraisers. And again, just trying to stay safe with the pandemic in doing those fundraisers. But let's, let's do more and more activities. We need our students engaged. And we have wonderful presidents of our PTOs and our parent groups that are just all in. And they're a wonderful group of people. And we look forward to continuing to work together in our meeting on December 1st.
Special education, the next CAC meeting is February 9th, 2022. Scholarship, Mr. Walsh.
We met last night, stuffed envelopes and send them out to prospective vendors for our ad book. The reason we put together an ad book, because the only money that the Jackson Township High School Scholarship Committee basically has is what we make from the ad books, or selling water or flowers on graduation day, and that has not been very lucrative in the last two years. So if you get a chance, take an ad in the ad book, because it'll go back to the kids as a scholarship. One important date, December 20th, okay, is the cutoff date, it's not set in concrete, okay, for anyone who's interested in sponsoring a scholarship. You can go online, you can go to the district site, you can go to the Jackson Township High School Scholarship Committee's site, and you can get an application and just send it in. And if you can't find that, just call up the guidance council in school, and they'll point you in the right direction. That's it.
Buildings and grounds, Mr. Walsh.
Okay, there's a lot going around with facilities, but first of all, one good thing that my wife likes is that another trailer bit the dust over at Get School, they got rid of a trailer, removed it, and it's not coming back. That's good to know. Okay, put in an application, recreation grant for the state for redoing the tennis courts over at Memorial and the running track. The Fuel Depot repairs are underway with NJDEP site remediation going on. Okay, there's ESIP projects going on, most specifically, the solar PPA is going in full force. You could see it happening in certain buildings, putting in new controllers, new panels, so there's a lot going on as far as that's concerned. We have a final stages hopefully of an electric charging station being erected for two electric garbage trucks, and maybe more to come. And then again, we have the green ribbon schools. We now have three silver level green ribbon schools, and the rest of our buildings are bronze. That is all.
Budget and finance, Mr. Walsh.
The district is collecting data now to start putting their budgets together, they'll be presented or they'll be finalized basically in January and February.
Transportation, Mr. Herman.
We had an hour-long meeting this week. We were discussing with the new busing director, transportation director, all the new initiatives he's putting in place to try to attract more drivers, try to get the system flowing the way it should be. You know, we had issues over the past couple of years. We discussed the Aiden Lou private school busing as well, as well as other things in transportation, and it's looking up.
Curriculum committee, Mr. Spaltov.
All right, we met this week as well. We reviewed a lot of the stuff that was presented this evening. There were some concerns in regards to graduation data and AP testing differences from one side of town to the other side of town. We got an update on the math K-5 adoption and science K-12 adoptions. The staff is currently reviewing the process, is in the review process, and hopefully we'll have recommendations by February. One of the things that Mrs. Permili spoke about earlier, the seal of biliteracy, which is a pretty impressive endeavor for our students to be able to walk out of high school essentially fluent in two languages, and as she mentioned earlier, there's over 60 students, which is the largest cohort that is going to be taking that in Jackson. We reviewed the summer programs as well as the after-school tutoring program, which we all got an email on this week, and that was that.
Policy committee, Mr. Herman.
We had another round of productive meeting again. You know, these meetings are quite interesting. We go through the policies that very few people read, but they're quite important to the way our district functions. We were finishing up the COVID-19 Health and Safety Road and Forward Plan. In addition, policy 8810, which is going to be abolished, was something that was discussed, and I think we all came to an agreement in how we should vote.
And the enrollment study committee, Mr. Sargent.
We have a meeting tomorrow night. Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion for approval of policies and regulations, second reading, and with adoptions.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltov?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Note to P-1000, P-1648.11, and yes, to everything else.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of policies and regulations, first reading.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltov?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of policy abolished.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltov?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the minutes on the closed session meeting of October 27th, 2021, and the official board meeting of October 27th, 2021, committee of the whole business meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltov?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the bill list.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltov?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mrs. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion for approval of the treasures and board secretary's reports.
Move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spaltov?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to open public forum on agenda items only. We will hold another public forum during this meeting for other questions. This public forum will be for questions on the agenda only.
Move.
Second.
Please sign in and state your name, and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak. No person may speak more than once on the topic until all others have been heard.
We also ask that you just point to what particular agenda item you're referring to. Thank you.
You ready? I'm just referring to the. I was just referring to the COVID, the Road to Recovery Plan. Does that have any mention of when the mask mandates are going to be lifted for the students in the schools?
I'll respond. No, it does not. It's when the executive order is removed, that's when we're allowed to change that mandate.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
How's everybody doing tonight?
I had a very similar question. My name is Eli Gallagher. You ready? Okay. My question is basically that there's an executive order going on with the governor right now. Now, the governor has a lawsuit against him. Does everyone on the panel understand that? We all understand that Bruce Affron from Princeton is suing him right now? Has anyone from this panel or from this county or from Jackson Township challenged this executive order at all? Any of you personally? No? Nobody? Nobody stepped up against this? Nobody thinks this is absurd? Because when Bruce Affron asked him in court for documents about why we're still masking these children when these children go to Walmart with their parents every day and don't have to wear a mask, and nobody thinks that's a big deal, right? That the governor of the state of New Jersey, who works for every one of you and works for myself and my wife and my children, just gets executive privilege and doesn't have to say anything, just does whatever he wants, huh? So this guy is the king of New Jersey now? Right? Everyone agree to that? That he just doesn't have to answer your questions, even though he's a representative with powers that have been given to him by us in goodwill? And now, he's just doing as he pleases with no facts, no, nothing, just doing whatever he feels like. There are facts, is there? What kind of facts? Where are they? Why is he not showing them if he has all these facts? Who is that, by the way? Stand up and be recognized.
Sir? Sir? All the comments should be directed to the chair. Hang on, hang on.
I'd appreciate if you let them know, too.
I will. This is not supposed to be a back-and-forth, so you're welcome to comment.
I understand how it works. I'm a member of local 456, Middlesex County. We do this all the time, and I'm having the same argument with them right now.
Okay.
Because they support this governor as well, and this governor is garbage. He's trash, if you guys were wondering.
Point of order, please. I had to put up with one.
Mr. Acevedo? As I just explained, we really, this is not supposed to be a back-and-forth, so let the gentlemen speak.
Stay civil, please remain civil. Don't call people names. Try to remain civil.
I'm absolutely being civil. This is me being civil, Mr. Acevedo. I've just met you, my name's Eli. Nice to meet you. But I am being civil as of right now. I don't know what you're talking about, what we're referring to, so after I watch it on YouTube, I'll come back with it. I don't know. This is absolutely out of control, and we all know it. It's gone too far. When are we, as the citizens of New Jersey, going to put our feet down and protect our children? This is insane. You're not protecting them by covering their faces every day. They go to Walmart with their parents, they go to ShopRite, they go everywhere, all over the sun with their parents with no masks on, and they're fine. And then when they come to school, they have to play this game like they're protecting themselves and each other by putting a covering on their face. It's a pure absurdity, and we all know it. We all know it. Can we be adults for five minutes of our lives, please? The last two years of this, I haven't been sick one time. I worked in a data center for Mike Bloomberg, the ex-governor of New York, and we were perfectly good to keep his stock market running for 18 months. And then when we decided we didn't want to have a vaccine, you know what happened? They let us go, because that's their new policy. So they can just change policy whenever. This is pathetic, what's going on. Absolutely pathetic, and we should be ashamed of ourselves for not doing something for these children. I have three small children in this township, and I'm ashamed to be a parent that I, no one's done anything about this. I can't possibly be the only one. Thank you for your time.
Maria, you can come up.
Hello, Maria Froyo, Jackson resident. I had a question about some of the money that Mr. Rotante was talking about and the survey that came out and the way that it'll be used and implemented. And I wanted to know if any of the Board of Ed members has done a recent tour of any of the school buildings, especially the outside of the buildings? And I would welcome the Board of Ed to visit in person and participate in a full tour of the grounds of our schools, including this high school, before any money is spent. For example, the parking lots have potholes, the tennis courts, I know you had mentioned something about the tennis courts and the track fields. Some of those things are pretty much unusable in the condition that they're in right now. Switlick still has trailers. And I haven't really seen any money being spent for improving hand washing, specifically in the bathrooms as far as better soap dispensers, automatic soap dispensers, even an extra soap dispenser. I have not seen any of that. I haven't seen an improvement in the hand drying systems. We still have hand drying systems that really don't dry your hands. The locker rooms, I would encourage you to look at some of the outside locker rooms in the football areas. And one thing that surprised me and why I'm really bringing this up, the concession stands at the football stadium don't have running water, at least the one that I was volunteering in. So I had to wear a mask when I was inside the concession stand, but yet I had no access to running water. So that really doesn't make much sense, and this isn't something that just happened now. There hasn't been running water in that concession stand for many years, what I'm told. So how can I, or anyone, serve food in that concession stand and not be able to wash my hands? I was told maybe next year we were going to get running water. Are you aware that there's no running water in the concession stand? And if you're not, again, I didn't know, because I was never there before, but now that I know, I would really like to have some sort of hand washing, because that's the best way to avoid spreading any kind of germ. And I really don't know how we pass any health inspections without having running water. Or some other schools have provided temporary running water when they have different competitions and things like that to help that. So there is pipes there, there was running water at one point, but there isn't any running water in that concession now. So again, I think there might be a little loophole in that when they stipulate after-school programs, and I would just really encourage all of you to do a little walking tour and see exactly the conditions of some of the fields. It's really embarrassing when you go to other schools and you see what their fields look like and you compare them to Jackson. So I encourage you all to put that on your schedule. Thank you.
Should I talk and then write, or write and then talk? Okay, I'll talk. My name is Maria Samoyorgos, and I wanted to respond to you with your question to this gentleman about the teachers. I do agree that we do not want to increase. I do agree that we do not want to increase classroom sizes, because yes, it wouldn't be in the benefit of the children. On the other hand, my mother was a teacher in Howell. She has retired now five years ago. My teacher, my aunt was a teacher in New York for 35 years. The BS red tape policies, the rules or whatever that have been put on our teachers in the past couple of years, it makes it so difficult for them. My mother couldn't wait to retire. She put in her 25 years, she got her full pension, she was out of there, she couldn't wait to get out. And a lot of her and her friends who did retire didn't, were very happy, they did not encourage their children to go into education because of all the extra BS going on right now, coming from the state. So I had a tutor come to my house for my son when he needed it, she was also the same thing. It's just overwhelming for them. They're just beyond overwhelmed. So ultimately, I just wanted to respond that sometimes in the teachers' benefit, it's the state. I think they just got to become a little bit more lenient. Number two, I do agree with that parent. I'm not wearing a mask. You're not, you're not, you're not. A lot of other parents here aren't. I do agree. A lot of other parents here aren't. I do agree. But yet, my daughter, I have twins who come here to Memorial, my daughter got two days detention because she wasn't wearing her mask properly, because it was below her nose. And the vice principal happened to catch her on the same day, and she quickly put her mask up, and he was like, "Oh", and he called in and went to the office, and he gave her two days detention. I allowed her to handle it how she wanted to. I wanted to personally call him and tell him, "I do not comply. Me and my husband aren't doing this." She said, "Mom, let it go." At the end of the day, the mental health that we're going to be taking that money, putting toward kids, I get it, it's not in your hands. It's the state. But as a parent, and I know I'm supposed to be addressing you guys, so, but I'm addressing these people and everybody who's gonna watch us afterwards, it's us, not you. So we're getting angry at you, saying you're not doing something, you're not stepping up, you're not whatever. But in reality, can I look at them? Is that okay? It's us. We don't have to ask them for permission. We don't have to ask the governor, the president, the doctor...
The comments need to be directed to the chair.
Sorry, I'm sorry. That's why I didn't, because it's not toward you guys. But that's the truth. So ultimately, when we as parents, as citizens, as human beings, look to other people, we have to be like, "No, no, no, we're coming together." So as parents now, now, I'm not saying to start some kind of whatever, but the reality is, maybe we need to band together and pull our kids out of school, do things that will make the change. Now, again, you guys will say, "No, don't do that", but to me, that's how you make a difference. You pull your kids out of school, you make different choices. We all stand together and send them into the building with no masks on. That's my advice, instead of us coming and yelling at you guys. Because I'm gonna be honest, I'm letting my kids still playing this little game right now. We're going to school, we're having fun, blah, blah. When that vaccine mandate comes out, we're out of here. Out of here. I'm not doing that. That is my limit. We have, me and my kids, we have these BS kind of nylon masks right now. Okay? It's not that. Some nylon, like stockings, that they put over their face, because it's really a joke. But again, when that mandate comes out, in New York, the mandate came out, and in Chicago, when the mandate came out, thousands of kids were pulled out. Thousands. So maybe that's the wake-up call that we need. So I just, you know. That was just it. Just, you know. But like I said, as parents, I'm not blaming you guys. You guys, whatever, you're following the rules, you're doing what you guys have to do, whatever. Me as a mom, me as a sovereign being, have to stand up. We as parents have to stand up and make the difference. That's what, so, thank you. And I will fill my email.
Hello. I just wanted to say, I don't really get the problem of masks. You know, they kind of stop the flow of it. I think everything is great about the mask mandate. I think it's pretty good. I think you guys should keep it. Vaccine mandate, too, that's a good idea. I don't think thousands of kids are gonna pull out. That just doesn't really make that sense to me. But okay, whatever you say.
Am I allowed to resume my four minutes since I was only up here for two seconds?
Nobody told you that you had to stop speaking? You're welcome to speak. Go ahead.
No, I know, but I didn't utilize my full five minutes, so I just wanted to make sure it was okay to come back up here.
Just state your name.
Jennifer Gallagher. And yes, I am a part of the district. I actually do hold you guys responsible, because I have personally reached out to everybody that I can think of. And all of my phone calls have gone unanswered. All of my letters have gone unacknowledged. And the only people who seem to have any kind of communication with the governor are people in the positions that you're in, like the superintendent. I'm sure that you get information from him or his departments. No, you don't. But you're able to enforce it. So if my child went to school and didn't have a mask on, she would get sent home. And eventually, if she did it enough, she would be suspended. So why is it that you can't challenge this mandate, but you can enforce the punishments? If you guys are the middlemen behind, in between this, I don't see how you're advocating on behalf of the parents. And I think it's really interesting that you're rolling your eyes at me, because parents used to have a say over their kids. And if you want to send your child to school with a mask or get a vaccine, that is completely your choice. But this is the thing that everybody has a problem with, is that you're taking that choice away from us. These are our children, and we are in control of them. You're not. We are graciously allowing you all the privilege to be a part of their educational careers, and you're abusing that privilege. You're actually spitting in our faces by mocking our concerns. I think that it should be completely optional, and at the discretion of the parent, what they decide to do with their children. And I think that it should never be questioned, because if it was your children in this position, in a very unprecedented time where information is constantly back and forth and rewritten every day, you'd probably feel different about it. Especially when you have children who are in the age frame that have not been affected by this. They were safe for 18 months. Right? That's what the CDC has said up until September. That's so strange. So I think that this is something that you all need to strongly consider, because the parents are talking. We are all talking about pulling our kids out. So if you guys still want to have an opportunity to sit up here and have this little job, hobby, whatever you want to call it, maybe you should listen to the people who give you a reason to sit here. Thank you.
Yeah, but as long as this is on an agenda item, because we do have another public participation on non-agenda items. So if this is anything pertaining to the agenda...
I don't know the difference, the agenda.
Okay, so then save the comment for the second public participation, which is the non-agenda items.
Okay. I've never, this is my first one I've been to in Jackson.
Yeah, it's fine.
I know I'm messing up your meeting a little bit.
Nope.
Basically, I wanted to ask about the green agenda, about are you doing the work union on all the schools? Are you doing the work union on the schools? You were doing solar panel work and changing out some parts on some of your green stuff?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear your question. Could you say it again?
You have solar panels and green initiatives on your schools, correct?
Yes, correct.
Now, you're changing out parts, you said, right? You got money to change out parts on things and updating some of the items that you have? That's what we were just talking, you guys were just talking about.
We have an energy savings project, yes, that includes solar.
Okay. Now, is this work being done union?
Oh, he's asking if this is being done by...
By a, you know the union that the teachers belong to? A union like that?
Is it being performed by union employees? Ms. Richardson?
Yes, sir, I know what a union is. Thank you. Ms. Richardson, could you respond to that question?
But we don't want to go back and forth, so let him finish his comments, and then we'll respond at the end as...
A simple yes or no would suffice.
As is our practice.
Is that the only question, sir?
It's not the only question. That's...
Okay, so can you go ahead and...
Then I need to know the rest of it. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, could you go ahead and ask your other questions?
Oh, the rest of the question is, if so, what are the names of the contractors? And if not, what are the names of the contractors that are doing work in the township that I'm paying for?
Ms. Richardson?
No one has this information?
No, I'm turning to my business administrator who will respond. Thank you.
I'm not leaning in to be smart. I'm literally leaning in, because I'm going deaf, so.
Okay.
It's nothing personal.
No problem. I can get you a list of the vendors that are doing the work. We're using an ESIP program, so everything's been bid out over two years ago, so I don't have the list of the companies in front of me. And all of them are paying prevailing wage. I don't think it's required that they be in a union, but it is required that we pay prevailing wage.
Yeah, I don't think it's required either. I was just, it was just a state. I was just wondering, and I was wondering if, if so, what contractors are you hiring, if you're hiring non-union?
I could provide you with a list of the unions. If at the end of the meeting you come and give me your email address, I'll give you a list of the companies that are doing the work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing no one else coming forward, I move that we close the forum.
All in favor? Any opposed? I need a motion to move finance.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spalto?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move facilities.
Motion. Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spalto?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a move, need a motion to move programs.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, for number 12, which is the, for the regulation 5751, which we believe we just passed, it says we have to put in a process for claims to go forward. I would like to see somebody from outside of the administration, at least at some level, to be able to know what's going on, just to bring in another perspective. Is that something that we could do?
The policy is written based on the law, which requires district folks to be named in those roles.
I'm sorry? I can't, can't hear?
Sure, no problem. I'll repeat. The policy is written based on the law, which requires district people to be identified in those roles. If there was a conflict above and beyond the appeal, then we would be looking outside for that.
No, I understand district people, but is it possible to put something in each school, at least at some level to, you know, at least at some stage at the appeal process, meaning that's outside of the administration, you know, the centralized administration?
Yes, as we discussed in the committee, it's, the way that the policy is written in the law is that the district offices should be informing the schools of the findings. So that's the why we appointed people in this direction.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Number one. Okay, this family literacy and math night at home and school, it sounds like a great thing, giving the parents some tools they need to help their students at home. Are we doing that at any other building, or is this only Title I?
These are Title I programs, so they are focused on our Title I schools. So at this time, we are not doing any other family nights related to math and literacy other than in the Title I schools, but we will always continue to look to expand those. We have some data now that supports some of that, too.
In regards to number 13, just a thank you to Mrs. Bender again. I know she did this last year and presented at the board level, going and getting the 20-day onsite artist in residence for the students at Liberty.
I need a motion to move students.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
Did we vote on... Did we vote on programs?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
We need to vote on programs.
Yes. I need, roll call from programs.
Mr. Spalto?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move students.
Motion, move students.
Second.
Discussion.
Could someone explain to me what 9A is, what type of group that is, what they do?
It is a volunteer club, which is student-driven. All of our, all of our clubs come from the students expressing a desire for a club. So this was a student-driven club that was suggested, and we have two advisors. The students are required to find an advisor to help support that club. So that's where it has come from.
And what's that club's, like, stated goal?
Well, I think the, the club is intended to support students of all types of different approaches to gender.
Thank you.
Just, just an observation, number 10. Okay, ski trips are back. That's pretty normal at the high school level.
Roll call.
Mr. Spalto?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
No to 9A, yes to the rest.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
No to 9A, yes to everything else.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to move personnel.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Spalto?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Acevedo?
Yes.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Yes.
Mr. Sargent?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes. I need a motion to open in public forum on any topics pertaining to the Board of Education.
Motion. Second.
Please sign in and state your name and whether or not you are a Jackson resident. Each person is allowed a maximum of five minutes to speak, and no person may speak more than once on a topic until all others have been heard.
Hello. Megan Gardella, 21 Peacock Lane. I was very impressed with all the things that the district has going on. It is nice to see my own children back in normalcy, and I'm excited for the ski trip club, starting at the middle school, because my daughter came home today, and it's something that my husband and I have been talking about since she's been born. You know, it was an amazing meeting, and I don't mean to re-bring doom and gloom at all, but I respectfully am requesting that the Board of Education, and, you know, I read the road forward quickly, because I saw that was revised, and it talks a lot about the staff, but I, and I understand that some of the stuff's out of your control. But at some point, when you do find information out regarding our students, if we could have some information, or, you know, regarding possible mandatory vaccinations, you know, sooner than later, I think a lot of the COVID stuff, unfortunately, it's probably not your fault. However, it does come at the last minute. I feel like the community deserves to be abreast of the development of policy, protocol, and procedures to handle it, and conversations need to be had, because we do have some exemptions for staff members who are, you know, for whatever reason, unvaccinated. And, you know, I think the community, as you can see, is just kind of curious about that. Additionally, you know, our kids have been masked a long time. I talked about this last year. I have a little six-year-old, and she's learning phonics-based. Even when I talk to her, you know, I have to look her in the face for her to understand some of my words. She has no teeth at the front, due to her age level. They just all fell out. So sometimes, like, V is not T, and S is a different word. And I just, you know, I saw the protocol for foundations, and that is a phonics-based program. And at what point, you know, can we, is there anything coming down from the state? I know, you know, we had an answer before, that it's the state's telling us. But these are our young children, and I think that, you know, we need to consider what, what we're doing here, and if we really develop a policy in that moving forward, you know, a statement that's our district, based on community beliefs, as opposed to, you know, a guideline that we just kind of copied and pasted. You know, if you guys ran a for-profit business and you gave quarantine time the way that we're giving quarantine time, you really wouldn't be making any money. I know kids, they're not production staff members, and they shouldn't be dollars and cents. But if it wasn't for them, none of us would even be in this room, having these discussions. And I, again, I just, I can't wrap my head around it, because I talked to OSHA, and I, I'm really pushing and urging this board to look at your one regulation, 9140. And you need to, guys, need to think about citizen advisory councils. Doesn't need to be all parents, maybe one choice parent, the OSHA department, you know, someone from your administration or the board. You know, there's nursing professionals in town. There's a nurse on the OSHA Board of Health who's a Jackson resident. You know, I just feel like it's really sad to see all the contentious that comes, and I feel bad that that's, you know, how these meetings have to go, and what parents feel. They need to get up in arms in order to feel that they're being heard. I also feel that the, keeping in 9140, and I guess the way that I am, I think you guys should consider a citizen advisory council for transportation. You know, I talked to a lot of people throughout the community, and there's a lot of ideas out there that I, you know, again, I, I'm not saying that they're telling you what to do, but sometimes a group of seven, or whoever we're talking to, may not have all the answers. Because remember, leaders ask questions to various people in order to develop solutions. And I think, like, now is probably a pivotal time for you guys to think about that regulation that's in your policy and procedure, unless you're revising that. that's in your policy and procedure, unless you're revising that next month.
Maria Froyo, Jackson resident. I have, first, Mrs. Pormelli, I really would like to commend you and your secretary for having very well-run meetings and for allowing everyone a chance to speak. That doesn't happen at every school district. And even though we may not disagree, I do appreciate having the time to speak, and the meetings have been very organized, and I do appreciate that. I also sympathize with your current situation, and I hope that with changes that are going to be on the board, that you will get some support that you need and some very good advice, which I think is lacking. I had a quick question about the OSHA that just came forward with suspension of enforcement of the vaccine mandates for employers after the court issued a stay on the order. Does that affect us and our district?
The OSHA regulations were put on hold by the, I think, the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals.
Right.
That had to do with employers that employ more than 100 employees nationally. So that did not, as I understand it, impact local, state ordinances. I think that really dealt with private employers, not public sector employers. I'd have to triple-check, but I don't believe that that applied to school districts.
If it does apply to the school districts, that was my follow-up question. In light of that, what is the Board of Education's position on testing teachers and staff? And if we are actually still required to do so? I understand that there's a lot of things that you would like to control, but you, it's out of your control, but is this something that we're able to utilize and not test our teachers and our staff? I love our teachers. I love our staff, and I hate the fact, and I don't want my taxpayer dollars being spent dragging teachers that I know and love at 7:00 in the morning to go get a COVID test that they don't want or don't need. And is there, is there any way that we can utilize that now, even though you're saying it's nationwide? Because up until September 9th, this was just a press release. There was no actual mandate. And OSHA has said they don't have supervisors to be going to all of these different employers, making sure that any of this is actually being implemented.
So I can?
Do you really wait for the public to finish and then respond?
Oh, it's, since it's a legal question, that's why I was, was asking that portion directly to you.
I'll wait till you're done, and then we'll respond at the end.
Okay. As far as some of the masking policies and the executive order, yes, some of it is out of your control, Superintendent Pormelli, but there are some loopholes in the executive order, and I spoke about this before, and making it very easy for you to be in a position to make everyone happy. If you want to wear a mask, you can wear a mask. But if you don't want your child to wear a mask to school, you should be afforded that opportunity. And I feel like this district made it very difficult for parents to put forth a note, which Governor Murphy said, if parents provide a note from a medical professional, the child would be exempt. That medical professional could be a veterinarian technician. It doesn't have to be a medical doctor. But Jackson School District really made it very hard for parents to utilize this loophole that is as large as a hula hoop, so that if you don't want to have your child wear a mask, you don't have to. But this school district made the parents provide notes from a medical doctor, even though Governor Murphy did not imply that. That's his fault. That's his problem. That's his executive order. He put that you could have a veterinarian technician write your child a note for a mask exemption, and I would like to know why Jackson School District doesn't just take the notes? Why do the parents have to provide more documentation, medical notes, all kinds of paperwork that's unnecessary? Thank you. My other quick comment is, since you have the screen, why can't you just have a little clock that starts at 5:00 and gives a countdown? I would appreciate that. Are you going to answer about the OSHA?
I am, yes. So like I said, I'm not 100% positive, but I don't believe that that requirement, in terms of OSHA, what was stayed by the Fifth Circuit, applies to this public school district. We're still bound by Executive Order 253 regarding testing and/or vaccines for staff and other covered workers. So either the covered worker provides proof of vaccination, or in the alternative, they can be subjected to weekly testing to show proof of a negative COVID test. That's still the requirement in New Jersey.
Is there another type of COVID test that they can do home and provide that? There's a lot of, there's a lot more options in testing. Are you aware of any other testing?
Ms. Pormelli.
Thank you. So we have provided onsite availability for testing, and it is free to our employees, and it is state-funded. It is not coming from district budget. We do have multiple opportunities for our staff to provide examples of their testing. They don't have to use the onsite. They can use other sources of testing.
How are you going to check about the OSHA? And how will I know? How can, how can I find out?
I'm happy to report out at our next meeting on it. I'll be here.
That seems like an awful long time, but I understand.
Seeing no one else come forward, I need a motion to close the second public forum.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board comments. Mr. Spoltoff.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. I'd like to respond just to a few of the comments. Let me just take a look at my notes. The lack of the running water in the concession stands for, I will look into. We do, I know we do have hand sanitizer, but I still will look into that. I do have to say, I disagree with our, our facilities, our outside facilities not being up to par. Do I think there's always room for improvement? Yes, I do. We've had an extremely difficult time with our Liberty Fields in the past years because we couldn't get water to them. Right before Mr. Ostroff, our last director of facilities, left, he was able to get some water to the fields, which was a huge accomplishment, hadn't occurred for 10 years. So we are definitely making progress. I never say that we are perfect. We certainly need to, to always improve, but I, I do think that we're in a decent place. And as Mr. Walsh had mentioned, we are looking at our trailers. We have just removed one from GATS that was, we felt needed to, wasn't being used, and we needed to remove it. So we are beginning to look at those things. As far as the money that we have received, as Mr. Rotante mentioned, we have required areas that we need to use that money in, such as academic programs, programs to address social, emotional learning, and mental health. So we are required to use money in certain ways. However, we will also look to see, as we do every year, what are some capital improvements we need to make to our facilities? And one of the biggest things that we have done in this district recently is the ESIP project, which is an energy savings project, which allowed us to update a lot of our infrastructure, our heating systems, and all of those things. We have new ventilating systems that were all paid through the savings that are coming from the solar. So we do have lots of things that we are doing, but again, we're, we're always looking to improve as well. In regards to, I mentioned the testing and what we're doing. We'll take a look to see if there is a clock we can get for public speaking moving forward. That's something we can certainly explore. And, you know, I, I know, and I appreciate some people making comments, that we have an executive order that we're required to follow, and I appreciate people recognizing that. And I think that's all I need to respond to right at the moment. Thank you, Mr. Rivera.
Board comments. Mr. Spoltoff.
I had mentioned my comments earlier about the great quotes that I got from Holman there. Normally, I would watch the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade, but this year I'll be watching the ABC Parade out of Philly to see our one-band performance, and just wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Enjoy your family, and do it safely so that we're not quarantining a gazillion kids while we return. Thank you.
Mr. Sargent?
I'd like to say that I do sympathize with all of the people that don't want their children to wear masks. I'm one of them. I can tell you that my daughter had to spend two days out of school because she went to the nurse and asked the nurse for a cough drop, and that was the wrong thing to ask. My daughter also just finished up 10 days of quarantining because she came in close contact with someone who got tested positive for COVID. I don't want my daughter to get COVID, but I think that all of these mask mandates are a bunch of crap, and I can't wait until they end. If a shot becomes a mandate for my daughter, I'll be pulling my daughter out of this school district. Thank you. Have a good night.
Mr. Herman?
I'm sorry, it's not public comment time, but I did not, but I'd be happy afterwards to address any parent questions in regards to the notes.
Sir, we're in the middle of board, we're in the middle of board comments. If any question was missed, I'm sure Ms. Pormelli will circle back as appropriate.
Yeah, I will. Thank you.
Mr. Herman?
So first to echo Mr. Sargent, agree with you 1,000%. I would like to congratulate all that, all those that won the election a few weeks ago, and I'm sure you'll be able to take the lead of district forward through the challenges that lay ahead, and looking forward to you all to do great things. I'd also like to congratulate Holman. Thanks for staying all the way to the end. It's been a, it's been a long meeting, and keep doing a great job. Thank you.
Mr. Oscevedo?
School board work. It's on. School board work is either an act of love, or it's wasted. These are moments when the community represents itself to speak to issues that improve or ruin a school district. No town is ever better than a school district. With a good school district, you can brag about being a good town. Now, I will tell you this much. What the Holman School did in a time of COVID is beyond heroic. To win a Blue Ribbon Award like McAuliffe did years ago is heroic. My congratulations with full pride. Now, my work as a board member will end soon, so I will stick some ideas out for you to consider. I mentioned before that we have, I was in the board where we picked board member representatives years ago, and I would suggest, as I did the last time, that we have a male and a female for Liberty, a male and a female for Memorial. And one could be the alternate, and one can speak, the other one is there to keep up and to mention, to be able to cover the other gender that gets left out. Also, I would like for, after hearing what happened with the local school district and, and athletics, I would suggest that we go back to having an athletic committee with some teeth to, to inform our athletes that the school district, the school district does not end at the frontier of this building and this campus. That what we do matters, and that when we wear the uniform of our school district, we represent the community. So I would suggest that we start, next time around, a, an athletic committee. Also, I would, I would like for you to understand that I will be coming back. I will be, I will be regaining my title as citizen resident, and you will hear from me. Do not get, don't think of me as, as a person coming to, to argue, to complain, to put down. I will be here interested. When I have nothing to say, I will not say it. When I have something to say, I will say it, like I've always done. But I will tell you this much. The new board, congratulations, but I will tell you this much. The victory you won, earn it. I did for decades. I never took a day off that I didn't have to take off, because the kids matter. And when people say we don't care about children, it sickens me. People who are never here, comment about what we do as if they were here all the time. It used to be that we had every seat filled. Even tonight, we didn't have as many seats as I would have liked to have seen. It was my first complaint when I first came on the board three years ago. Why aren't there more people here? We have got to invite more people, make them feel welcome, and this district is the most welcoming district. Yeah, if you're a resident of Jackson, God bless you, you have a darn good school district. Your children are in good hands. You may not like some things that we do, but the laws are the laws, and you don't want a bunch of board members who make up laws or break laws just because it's their opinion. Opinion is worthless, my own, without facts. Science matters. Medicine matters. And I have, I've been in the hospital, and I've seen little children wrapped up like mummies. They looked like skeletons because they were sick from COVID. And when they were saying no kid got sick, I had seen them, will, they couldn't wait for me to get out because people were dying and they needed the bed. You know, care about your children a little bit more. And I will say this one last time. If you're an athlete and you have no lung capacity, you stop being a great athlete. You can be a good trumpet player, good singer, so think about it. You may not die, but you're going to be injured, as my son was, as my sister was. Thank you very much.
Mr. Brenetsky?
Just want to congratulate the Blue Ribbon School, Mr. Karas and company. It's a very impressive achievement for you guys. Mrs. Rainey was the first teacher that we dealt with when we moved to, or when my eldest daughter started school, 1996, so we're very, very happy for her as well. As an old band parent, congratulations to the Liberty Band as they went through their season undefeated this year. It's quite an achievement for the staff and the parents and the kids. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. We'll see you next month.
Mr. Walsh?
Reading through the agenda, it was sad to see Mr. James Rankin resigning as the head baseball coach over there at Liberty. He built the program from day one. He helped out other sports. He will be missed very much in that school. I'd also was very happy to see the free in-person after-school tutoring program at the middle school and high school. That is a very good use of ESER money. It's going to be face-to-face tutoring, which some kids need. And again, kudos to Holman School, Blue Ribbon. It's there forever. Keep it up. I don't think you can win it again, but you can win it again? All right, win it again. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
I want to thank everyone for coming, your input and comments. Congratulations to Lucy Holman Elementary School on your prestigious Blue Ribbon Award and the Switlack Green Award. I want to thank you, Ms. Pormelli, and her staff for all your hard work and dedication to this district. Everyone have a safe and wonderful night. Ms. Pormelli?
Yes, thank you. So two, two points. One is your question, sir, are- One is your question, sir, or Ms. Froyo really is about the notes, the way our policy reads are, is that it needs to be a licensed medical professional. So anyone who is licensed is the way that it reads. So that's what we require as a district. And then regards, there was another question I realized I didn't answer, which was, do we have information on the vaccination of students? And I think I shook my head when somebody asked about, you know, do we hear from the governor's office? We do not. We, this historically through the pandemic, you've probably heard me say this in other meetings, is we learn things the same time that the community learns things. So it's unfortunate. Obviously, we'd want to give you all heads up if we knew that information. So if we do learn of anything, we will obviously communicate it as soon as we hear about it. So at this point, I have heard nothing about any mandate for vaccines for students. Thank you, Ms. Rivera.
Thank you, Ms. Pormelli. I need a motion to adjourn by acclamation.
Subpo.
Motion.
Acclamation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?